Councilmember DuBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Holman. Vice Mayor Ness. Councilmember Koo. Mayor Scharf. Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Walbach. Six present.
So tell us why you would like to be on the storm water management committee and what your qualifications are. And usually you talk for a minute or two and then we go into questions.
I just have a brief memory really, and that's my second month on the city council was when the flood happened in 1998. And that was an event that really raised the importance of storm drains and the inadequacy of the storm drain system that we had at the time. And so the council was engaged, you know, most of my term on the council engaged in storm drain issues, failing its first attempt to raise money for storm drains as I remember, but succeeding the second time. And so for me, this is just a sort of a cap on a process that I started working on at a very terrible time for the community. And it would be fun and an honor for me to serve in a role for the community to make sure that the bond measure was implemented in a way that met the public's requirements. And I was also on the library bond advisory committee. So I'm sort of really familiar with the process that we go through in order to hold the city's feet to the fire on behalf of the public. And then the last thing I'd say is, I really like this community. I really am sort of a governance policy junkie. And I'm not doing much of that these days, but these are just little things that I can do to contribute. So that's my statement.
Great. Thanks. And I've asked Corey if he would run the timer tonight. And have you ready to jump in with a question? If not, I will. So Dina, this is probably our most unsung job. It doesn't get that high visibility, but it's extremely important for just the reasons that you have said. And so as you go through this, what to anticipate will be the kinds of issues that they run into and that you might be there to guide them with, help them with, whatever.
Well, sometimes it's not clear. Sometimes there's changes in the way that money might be spent. And it's not clear whether or not it meets the terms of the original bond measure. So conversations like that can happen. Sometimes there's a miscommunication between staff and the committee about what's happened. Sometimes there might not be enough information. Sometimes the information might be confusing. And so a committee can spend time sort of working that out and getting things really clear. So in that regard, you know, I have a lot of experience working with staff. So it was helpful on the library bond oversight committee to be able to sort of figure out what might be going on, you know, how we could get the information we needed to proceed. And because I have a very clear understanding of what the role of such a committee has, I'm in a position to remind the committee that that's our role. Because we are, you know, we all like to get involved and we're interested and excited. And sometimes the committee wants to delve into things and ask staff why it's doing what it's doing. And in fact, that's not the committee's role. So I just think my experience working in and around the city is valuable in that way.
I think that's true. I know you have good connections and have kept them within the city. Yeah, I'm well aware of that. Eric?
Hi, Dina. Hey, thank you for serving on the library bond oversight committee. So you're kind of unique because you got experience with both sort of the stormwater infrastructure project, and you also served recently on an expensive construction bond oversight committee. I mean, between the library bond oversight committee's work and this committee's oversight work, do you think there's going to be a lot of difference? I mean, should we and council be worried about this?
If I took a guess, not having, you know, been watching the bonds closely, my guess is it's much more straightforward, the storm drains. I don't imagine that there's a lot of creative things going on. There's not, you know, a groundbreaking, innovative designed library. And city staff is quite competent and knowledgeable about the issues surrounding storm drains. So I would think that at this point, the city is well positioned to unroll its storm drain program without a lot of glitches. And that's one of the reasons I suspect it's unsung, because there haven't been problems. And that's a good thing. And it's important that we continue to make sure that there aren't any.
We don't pay as much attention when there aren't any problems. Yeah, we just don't. Who is next? Karen?
So is there anybody on the list that you don't want to work with?
I haven't looked. I don't know who's, except the gentleman who are sitting outside. I haven't met. I don't know who that is. I've known Dina long enough. I can do that.
But because you have served in so many capacities in the city, is there anything in particular, I mean, having heard what you've just said too, is there anything in particular you think that this committee ought to be mindful of? Is there any particular aspect or avenue about the oversight that you think ought to be like, you know, here's the one or two things that maybe we ought to be especially paying attention to?
My understanding of an oversight committee, and it certainly was true of the library bond oversight committee, is that it's a group of citizens who get together to make sure that the program is rolled out and that money is spent in the way that the voters were told it was going to be rolled out and the money would be spent. That's pretty narrow. And as I mentioned earlier, it can be a challenge for the committee not to try to break those bounds and to get into other conversations. But that's the job of the committee. And that's really where the committee needs to focus its energy. And if the committee does that and the staff does its work, then, you know, good things are going to happen.
I understand that. I was just thinking, is there anything that you could anticipate that'd be like, you know, the only reason I can think that we might go a little bit sideways on something is because of X, Y, or Z. That's, I don't know if you can even anticipate anything.
No. I personally don't think that, because I think that the city is, has, as I mentioned earlier, is at this point, pretty expertise in the area of storm drains. Do we need the committee? Yes, because you promised the voters that you would do it.
Right. Who is next? Lydia?
Thank you for coming in and participating again. So, you know, we've just come out of a drought. It doesn't feel like we're completely out of a drought, you know. I mean, we always have to be careful. So I was just wondering, what are your thoughts on using and managing groundwater as a resource? And, you know, in connection with our green infrastructure initiative, you know, how do you think, what do you think that we can do to recharge groundwater, the de-watering? How can we reuse the storm water that goes into the storm drains?
Well, there's a number of ways. There's a number of proven ways that have been done across the country. We have staff who have expertise in those areas of water recycling and storm water recharge. And I think the city has been doing some of those things. It's not this committee's job to, you know, divert the city's storm drain program to handle those issues. But, you know, there are a number of things that can and should be done. And many of them can and should be done on private property as well as public property.
Thank you. Okay, next.
I don't know as much I can add to that.
I think the issue is so straightforward. And you put it, you know, very concisely. This is, this is a very narrow, policy-driven, we've been given our orders regarding storm water and storm water management. And as you said, it's a pretty clear assignment.
And if the council or the committee tried to push things in other directions, the public would be furious and wouldn't agree to fund the next round of storm drain improvements. So it's just really important that we all stay on track.
Exactly. As long as they don't have you going around and putting them
Uh, for me, this is just a sort of a cap on a process that I started working on as a, at a very terrible time for the community. And it's, um, it would just be, it would be fun and an honor for me to, uh, serve in a role for the community to make sure that the bond measure was, um, implemented in a way that was, that met the, the public's requirements. So, and I, you know, I was also on the, uh, Library Bond Advisory Committee. So I'm sort of really familiar with the process that we go through in order to, um, hold the city's feet to the fire on behalf of the public. Um, you know, and then the last thing I'd say is, I really like this community. I really am sort of a governance policy junkie and I'm not doing much of that these days, but these are just little things that I can do to contribute. So that's my statement.
Great. Thanks. And I've asked Corey if he would, um, run the timer tonight. And have you ready to jump in with a question? If not, I will. So, Dina, this is probably our most unsung, um, uh, job. It doesn't get that high visibility, but it's extremely important for just the reasons that you have said. And so as you go through this, what do anticipate will be the kinds of issues that they run into and that you might be there to guide them with, help them with, whatever?
Well, um, sometimes it's not clear, sometimes there's changes in the way that, that money might be spent and it's not clear whether or not it's, uh, meets the terms of the original bond measure. So conversations like that can happen. Sometimes there's a, a miscommunication between staff and the committee about what's happened. Sometimes there, there might not be enough information. Sometimes the information might be confusing and so a committee can spend time sort of working that out and getting things really clear. Um, so in, in that regard, um, you know, I have a lot of experience working with staff. So it's, it was helpful on the Library Bond Oversight Committee to be able to sort of figure out what might be going on, you know, how we could get the information we needed to proceed. Um, and, um, because I have a very clear understanding of what the role of such a committee has, um, I'm in a position to remind the committee that that's our role because we are, you know, we all like to get involved and we're interested and excited and sometimes the committee wants to delve into things and ask staff why it's doing what it's doing. And in fact, that's not the committee's role. So I just think my, my experience working in and around the city is, is valuable in that way.
I, I think that's true. I, I know you have good connections and have kept them within the city. Yeah, I'm well aware of that. Eric?
Hi, Dina. Hey, thank you for serving on the Library Bond Oversight Committee. So you're kind of unique because you got experience with both sort of the stormwater infrastructure project and you also served recently on a expensive construction bond oversight committee. I mean, between the Library Bond Oversight Committee's work and this committee's oversight work, do you think there's going to be a lot of difference? I mean, should, I mean, should we and council be worried about this?
If I, if I took a guess, not having, you know, been watching the, the bonds closely, my guess is it's much more straightforward, the storm drains. I don't imagine that, um, there's a lot of creative things going on. There's not, uh, you know, a groundbreaking, innovative designed library. There's, um, and, uh, city staff is quite competent and knowledgeable about the issues surrounding storm drains. So I, I would, I would think that at this point, the city is, um, well positioned to unroll its storm drain program without a lot of glitches. And that's one of the reasons I suspect it's unsung, because there haven't been problems and that's a good thing. And it's important that we continue to make sure that there aren't any.
We, we don't pay as much attention when there are any problems. Yeah, we, we just don't. Um, who is next? Karen?
So, um, is there anybody on the list that you don't want to work with? I haven't looked at, I don't know who's, except the gentleman who are sitting outside. I haven't met, I don't know who that is. I've known Dina long enough, I can do that. Um, but if, because you have served in so many capacities in the city, if, is there anything in particular, I mean, having heard what you've just said too, is there anything in particular you think that this committee ought to be mindful of? Is there any particular aspect or avenue about the oversight that you think ought to be like, you know, here's the one or two things that maybe we ought to be especially paying attention to?
Yeah, my understanding of an oversight committee, and it certainly was true of the Library Bond Oversight Committee, is that it's a group of citizens who get together to make sure that the program is rolled out and that money is spent in the way that the voters were told it was going to be rolled out and the money would be spent. It's pretty narrow. And as I mentioned earlier, it can be a challenge for, for the committee not to try to break those bounds and to get into other conversations. But that's the job of the committee and that's really where the committee needs to focus its energy. And if it, if the committee does that and the staff does its work, then, you know, good things are going to happen.
I, I understand that. I was just thinking, is there anything that you could anticipate that'd be like, you know, the only reason I can think that we might go a little bit sideways on something is because of X, Y, or Z. That's, I don't know if you can even anticipate anything.
I, I personally don't think that because I think that the city is, has, as I mentioned earlier, is at this point, pretty expertise in the area of storm drains. Do we need the committee? Yes, because you promised the voters that you would do it.
Right. Who is next? Lydia?
Thank, thank you for coming in and, and participating again. Um, so, you know, we, um, we're, we've just come out of a drought. It doesn't feel like we're completely out of a drought, you know? I mean, we always have to be careful. So I was just wondering, what are your thoughts on using and managing groundwater as a resource? And, you know, in connection with our green infrastr- infrastructure initiative? Um, you know, how, how do you think, what do you think that we can do, um, to recharge groundwater, um, the de-watering? How, how can we reuse the storm water that goes into the storm drains?
Well, there's a number of ways. There's a number of proven ways that have been done across the country. We have staff who have expertise in, in those areas of, um, water recycling and storm water recharge. And I think the city has been doing some of those things. It's not this committee's job to, you know, divert the city's storm drain program to handle those, those issues, but, you know, there are a number of things that can and should be done and, and many of them, um, can and should be done on, uh, private property as well as public property.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
I don't know as much I can add to that.
I, I think, um, I think the issue is so straightforward and, and you've put it, you know, very concisely. This is, this is a very narrow, policy-driven, we've been given our orders regarding storm water and storm water management. And, um, as, as you've said, it's a pretty clear assignment and...
And if, if, if the council or the committee tried to push things in other directions, it would, the public would be furious and wouldn't agree to fund the next round of storm drain improvements. So it's just really important that, that we all stay on track.
Exactly. As long as they don't have you going around and putting those things that say, what, what do they say goes to the, right next?
Stickers that say goes directly to the bay or flows to such and such a creek.
Yes, right. Yeah, I'm always fascinated by that. So anything you want to say as they wind up? Clearly you've been convincing.
I, I think I've said really what I had to say and I won't bore you by repeating it. I'll let you move on to your next candidate.
Uh, thanks for applying. Um, it's great to have somebody with your background and experience and, you know, knowledge of what we're doing already, apply for it. Makes, makes a difference. So, thank you. Okay, so where is? Um, Bob didn't show up, but I have no idea why. Hi, are you David?
I am.
Hi, so David Bauer is our, David is our next, um, interviewee and welcome. There are normally nine of us, there were six tonight, obviously. And, um, we appreciate your being here and applying. So our normal, uh, way of going about this is to give you a couple of minutes to give something about your background, your interest, how long you've lived here, what got your attention and so forth, and, and why you would like to serve on the glamorous storm water wastewater committee. So, thank you for being here.
Oh, and don't put your mic on.
Yeah, just push the red button.
These are, these are a little, oh, there it goes. Well, thank you for, um, inviting me. I'm David Bauer. I was born in Palo Alto, so I've only lived here 66 years minus college. I'm a current member, as you saw, on my application of the Historic Resources Board. I was on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission with Greg and, uh, was on the Storm Water Committee and the Ballot Support Committee. So I have an interest in the Storm Water Commission because of the work I did with that. Uh, I think that I bring, um, uh, one of the people that supplied for this committee, a, a different focus. My professional career was in construction and, uh, I found during the, um, committee work to create the ballot initiative, the ballot proposal, that my experience in construction actually helped to formulate some of the ideas that were developed, specifically, um, how you could implement the storm water filtering requirements, which aren't even known yet, but, uh, on the model based on the, um, South Gate neighborhood. In other words, we're trying to capture some water. There were lots of ideas, but actually converting them into a fiscally responsible and affordable model was, um, somewhat difficult based on the variety of opinions. Anyway, I think I helped with that. So, um, that would be my motivation for being on this committee and, um, I, I don't think there's any more that I would say, but I'd welcome any questions from any of you. I know most of you, so.
Yeah, you've been involved with the city for a while, so I think you probably know those who are involved with the city, who the players are.
Sure.
And so forth. Um, anyone else want to start it out? And if not, I will. Go ahead, Karen, and then Eric.
So, um, as you mentioned and as we know you, uh, your background is in the construction industry, the construction trade. Um, do you think that gives you an added perspective on how to manage or, and oversee the budget on the storm drain project?
Well, it does. While I'm retired now, I had, um, extensive experience in creating budgets for construction projects. I actually managed, at the very end of my business career, a large project that involved the kind of work that the Storm Water Committee will oversee. Uh, not very much, I was in the residential, um, component, but I had extensive interaction with the city staff, as, as Phil knows, because I complained a lot about it. But I, I think that, that, that experience, understanding how the city works and also understanding the limitations of what you can and cannot do, um, affordably in a construction project ma- makes the difference. So, hope that answers your question.
Sounds awfully practical.
Well, I'm sorry. I, I apologize.
Eric?
Thanks. So, I was just going to ask, so thanks for applying, right? You were on the, the Bond Commission, Bond Group, right? So you know this area pretty well. What do you think the Oversight Committee should do to be most effective as, how can we get the most out of the Oversight Committee?
Well, I guess there are two components of that, um, based on my experience with the committee. One is that the staff component, which is, was very strong under Joe and remains in the new configuration, the new people that have taken over Joe's responsibility. They're very capable, but they need support of the community and what, um, what committee or, or commission members do is they're, the inter, the, the community interface. So we're the people who live here, don't have a, a job with the city, but are responsible for sort of overseeing it. And I think that the, the, um, most useful thing that those committee members can do is say, well, this is going to work, but wait a minute, you've got, you're going to have a problem with public relations if you push this or you do that. And that was my, um, concern as a builder here, that every time I went down to the building department, we'd get a different set of rules. And so you can't ever, you can't ever, you know, prepare your clients for this. And I think the client in this case is going to be the city resident who pays that bill. And so I think that interaction is helpful because I know that the staff members have, they're not siloed, but you know, they're so focused on their job sometimes that they lose sight of that. So I think that's probably an important aspect.
Um, any of the rest of you? That's right. Um, I had forgotten that you, you two have served together, so you're familiar with each other. So, as far as the number of meetings, I presume that poses no problem for you?
It, it shouldn't. I, I, um, spend most of my time now here in Palo Alto or traveling, so the travel schedule is erratic. But we have, in theory, two meetings a month at the Historic Resources Board. And so I think I've only missed two meetings this year out of all of the meetings that were scheduled. I could have been to the ones that were canceled. So I, I don't think seven, I, I gather seven is the number we're thinking about, or is that right?
Yes, seven is the number, right.
That seems easy. So...
So, um, I don't see any questions from anyone else. I appreciate the answers that you've given and we always give everybody an opportunity to, um, do their, their pitch at the end for why they should be chosen.
Well, I, um, I would think I have one of the unique skillsets from my construction, um, experience for the committee and although I did look at the list of people who've applied and I was pretty impressed, um, so, uh, I think I have something to add from that perspective, but I think that any number of those people, at least the ones I know of, would make a good committee, so that would be my pitch. So I, um, don't really have anything more to add to that and I know you've got a long list of people, so...
Well, I, I appreciate your applying, I, we all do. And, um, also knowing that you can make the meetings because they sometimes are, as I recall, at awkward times during the day. Am I right, Phil?
While we've been meeting kind of mid-morning, but we can, the news set, we can, you know...
We can alter that, yeah. Because the old one I thought was a little difficult to work with.
I'm totally flexible during the day and in fact make, you know, when we do our travel plans, they're typically pretty far in advance. And my wife is on the art, Palo Alto Art Center Board, so we're tied into staying here when it's important, so that's not, I, I'm not concerned about that and I wouldn't want you to be either. So, well, I'm assuming they wouldn't, um, they wouldn't schedule them at 8:30 AM on Thursday, which is when the HR...
You're doing Wednesdays, but...
Yeah, no, I could do Wednesdays. Also, I, I do, this is not part of the, the pitch, but I do appreciate all that you do. You, you spend far more time as council members than any of us on the boards do and that's, that is appreciated by all board members that I know, so, so I'd, I'd give you a thanks as well.
Thank you for saying something.
Good.
But also thank you for you and your wife being such long-term contributors to, um, to our, to our city as a whole.
Well, I live, I'm going to live here until I don't live, so it's an important contribution.
Good. Thanks for coming in, thanks for applying.
Can you hear him, Phil, something?
Of course.
Phil, how many meetings do they have?
Well, I may have two or three, so...
Okay, see the year.
Yeah, it's not, not a great number, yeah. Greetings.
Hello.
You are Ayla?
Yes, I'm Ayla.
Correct?
Yes.
As in, um...
The clan of the cave bear.
Yes, right. I only know one other Ayla, so I'm, I'm always fascinated when I, when I meet one. So have you applied for anything with us at the city before?
Never, first time.
Okay, well then, thank you. Um, here is what we usually do during the interviews. You have a minute or two or three to tell us why you're here, what your background is, what you think you could add to this particular group, and why you feel you can make the commitment that is to meet. And I just want to go through that again. You think two or three times a year?
Probably.
And for how long, Phil?
Well, it's, um, you know, you need how many years?
Yes.
Uh, so there's two, you're going to be selecting two groups. And, um, one of them is a two-year term and one of them is a four-year term. And that's the way the clerk's office set it up, so that it doesn't all turn over at once.
So, so is serving for two years or even four years, um, okay with you?
Sounds great. I have a five-year-old who just started first grade at Hoover, so I'm, I'm here.
So you're fine.
For the long haul.
Okay, so, um, uh, you know who we all are, Karen Holman, Greg Tanaka, Eric Vilseth, Lydia, um, Lydia. I, Ku, I have a friend with a similar name, and Corey Volbach. And, uh, we're the ones who, we are two-thirds of the group that will be making the decision. It's normally nine of us. So, it's, it's your, your floor at this point.
Okay. Um, I just celebrated my first year of Palo Alto homeownership. Every day I'm still like, wow, I'm really lucky, because I'm not a million billionaire, but I appreciate it. And, um, I've kind of been in and out of Palo Alto my whole life, even though I was born in Ohio. My, my parents lived here when I was five because my dad played for the Giants, when it was Candlestick Park. And then the next time I came back was after MIT to come and work in tech and I actually ended up being a 49ers cheerleader for a season. So during our first game, I got to call my dad and have this nice moment where I was like, hey, you're not the only guy in the family who gets to be on the field during a professional sports game. So it was nice. And, uh, ever since then, I've, I've been in tech and I kind of had a detour into, not really a detour because I love it, into the circus arts, um, for 10 years. And I ran to nonprofit organizations and I actually helped one of them recover from almost bankruptcy and closing the doors. And it's been very rewarding and now as I've kind of like closed the door on that career, I'm looking for other ways to volunteer. And, you know, as, as a first-time volunteer in a new field, I know that it's important to just kind of follow what speaks to you. And I've been on the email list for like seven years and every time an opening comes up, I'm like, hmm, maybe this is the one for me. And, you know, I'll look into it a little bit and be like, nah, but the like, storm water came up and I was like, huh, this is really interesting. It has to do with nature. Um, I live next to the Adobe Creek, so it's like in my neighborhood, all my neighbors talk about it. And my family was like, hey, if you want to do it, we'll support you, go ahead. And so it seemed like the perfect opportunity.
So let, let me start with something, now you're the first one I know that's had a circus background of some type. Um, and it says that you are the executive director of the Circus Center. So my question would be, how would you take those skills, what you learned in the circus world, and apply it to the storm water world?
Well, I'm, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, we're, this committee is a budget oversight, right? And we definitely had a budget at the Circus Center. It was, it was only 1.3 million, but you know, it's the...
It's real money?
It's real money, you know? It's, it's close to 13-ish million. No, this one's like seven million, right?
The total of this...
Yeah. So it's like same order of magnitude, okay? And we had to prepare a budget every year and then at the end of the year, we had to go over the budget and make sure it matched or didn't match and explain why. So it's, it's the same thing even though it's a different field.
That, that's a good comparison, thank you. That's, that makes, that makes some sense. Okay, somebody else? Corey?
Picking up off of that, um, you know, without going into airing, you know, uh, negative experiences in any other previous organizations, um, what do you, maybe we could put hypothetically, what are some potential challenges you might envision the city running into or this committee having to wrestle with and how you'd go about, you know, working with your colleagues and working with staff to, to get around them?
I was thinking about this a little bit today because, um, I know, like, in accounting, it's like, oh, we decided this was part of this category. And someone will say, okay, sure, I can see that, but I really think it's more of this category. And then you have to figure out how to decide what it actually belongs to, right? So, um, I mean, I think that's kind of the biggest challenge where you get somebody who's like insistent that it's one thing and it could actually be multiple things. So how do you resolve those kinds of differences, right? And you can do it, I mean, I think you can do it with numbers where if you don't have majority or whatever you decide it needs to be, to be a decision, that you keep adding a person until you get majority. So if you had like 19 things to review, more than half the people review 10 of them, right? And if everybody didn't agree, you'd keep adding a person in until you got tipping point. And if you didn't, then, then it goes the other way, but yeah, you eventually get there.
I, I think we're probably all thinking, given your computer science background in engineering and going to MIT, what an interesting thing to work at a circus center. It's something that is a nonprofit, presumably to save the circus, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's commendable, just, just very interesting. You would have won on a show called What's My Line, believe me. Yes.
So first of all, thank you for applying. Um, you know, we don't have too many people with school H kids applying, so I really got to commend you on that because I think it's important to get representation, so I think this is great. Um, so, you know, it's a committee, right? So there's lots of people on there, lots of diverse opinions, uh, but the decision has to be made. And sometimes there's a lot of controversy and a lot of difficult decisions. And how do you think, um, you work in a group, I, I think this is probably, of all the things, probably the least contentious, I would imagine, but how do you think you would resolve conflict and try to figure out how to get, get resolution on different decisions?
Well, from being a parent, I know that you kind of need to take like all of the heat, you need to like let the heated emotions run their course and then once that's over and everybody's calm, you know, hopefully it doesn't take that long for adults, then you can kind of say, okay, we've heard everybody through, we've, you know, now we need to actually, we're going to decide what the subset is and then everybody's going to vote on one of those and then that's going to be our answer and everybody has to be okay with that. So I think it's, as, as long as you push it out past the like heated moment time, then it, it kind of like follows this curve of easy to resolve, right? And the closer you are to trying to resolve it up there, then the harder it is or the, the more anger there is involved in it, but...
Yes, that's good. Lydia?
So thank you so much for applying and, um, I'm really glad that you chose this, you know, to catch your eye and, and apply here. Um, so I wanted to ask, so one of the goals of the Green Infrastructure Initiative is recharging groundwater. And obviously, you know, our storm drains are to relieve, to ensure that we're not flooded in the city, so in, in, in time of storm, it does go out to the bay. But, uh, there's been a lot of construction, de-watering, and that removes the groundwater and it discharges it into the storm drains. So what are your thoughts about those things?
About, um...
About, you know, de-watering going into our storm drains to be taken out to the bay versus what its intended purpose is.
Right.
Yeah.
So I have a question about that. Is that, is that happening just because that's how the system works or is that happening because they're misusing the system? Like they...
Well, um...
Like, do they need permission to have that happen?
They do.
And do they get permission for it?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Well, that's, it seems like if they have permission, then you have to be okay with it, right? If you want a different outcome, um, then you have to change the rules.
You could run for office.
As much as I don't like the pollution, you know, you have to say, hey, this is the process and you need to follow it. And if you don't, then here are the penalties and, and such. So, um, I mean, it sounds, it sounds not good. Um, I don't know that there's a great way to like, be like, hey, this is how we prevent that from happening, even if we don't want it to, right? Um, so it, it seems like rules are the best solution to that problem for now.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
I was going to say, can you answer my question?
Oh, good. And... Cory's keeping an eye on the time. Anything else one of you want to add? So if not, Ayla, this is your chance to do a final presentation, convince us to select you and so forth.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure. You can ask all you want.
I mean, how, how does it actually work? So let's say I'm part of the committee. What happens next, like?
For the most part, and I'll look at Phil. Phil, you're hearing, but for the most part, a time is chosen to meet. And usually, I don't know whether you've selected the chair in the past, Phil, or whether or not they've self-selected. Yes, you've selected the chair.
No, they have self-selected.
They have self-selected a chair. Many of these people know each other. And I think that they will self-select. And then they'll have guidance certainly from, from Phil Volbach, who is, what is your current title, Phil?
Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you. And, and he, he's, he's going to guide the group through what they're going to do. And we just said you meet two or three times a year, so it's not onerous. And I think it's a, a pretty casual group, meaning it's not really tied into a lot of protocol. And, but I think it's one that people enjoy serving on.
Does it work that...
Just to add, as far as when it will get going, the council will make a decision. I think it's two weeks. And so early fall, either late September or early October, we'll pull together, group together.
And to make it official, you could sworn in.
Sweet.
That's right. Yes, right.
With like a sword on both shoulders.
I don't remember what night we're making this election, but I imagine it's in early September.
I heard September 11th.
That sounds very likely. It sounds very likely, that Monday night. Good. Well, thank you so much for applying.
Yeah, thank you. That was fun. I apologize.
Do you have more than a five-year-old?
No, no. I'm not Wonder Woman. Thank you.
Yes, appreciated. Okay.
How many total on the group in the seven total?
And it looks as though our next applicant is Richard Whaley. So it is. Greetings, Mr. Whaley.
Greetings.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Welcome to the interview committee, which is two-thirds of what the normal council is, as you probably recognized. And you have 10 minutes. And our usual is to give you a minute or two or three at the beginning to tell us why you want to be on the committee, what unique perspectives you bring, what special qualities and so forth. And then give us a chance to quiz you and then give you a minute or so to wind up at the end.
Okay.
So welcome.
Welcome. My name is Richard Whaley. I'm a civil engineer. I've been serving the people of California for over 50 years. And I live in the South Palo Alto, just before San Antonio Road. I've lived there for 49 and a half years and raised a family. And storm drainage is one of my specialties, professional specialties. And so I thought, the staff wanted me to continue. I've been on the committee, the 2005 committee, from the beginning until it was disbanded this year. And I've been on the Blue Ribbon Committee. So I spent a lot of time on the storm drains in the last 11 years.
So how do you think things will change with this storm drain committee or with this new method that we're going to be using? What do you think?
You're not new, it's not really a new method. It's the same method, only we've expanded it and tried to include more things under one rooftop. There was a problem before where there was the money that went to the bond measure and then the other money that was the 2005 money. We've combined it all together and I don't see, we've actually streamlined the whole process for the city. And the people were able to buy what the Blue Ribbon Committee proposed. And basically, the reason for the committee is to convince the citizens that the city is taking their tax money and spending it on the storm drains and not buying the council, you know, vacations in Malibu. Well, no, that's, I mean, in 2005 was hard fought. There were a lot of people against it. And that, back in, before that, 2003 or 2002, the bond, the measure for storm drainage was defeated. And so there were a lot of people that came out and were against it. And so in today's politics, creating an advisory committee of citizens to check on the staff and make sure he's, you know, honest, that's basically what we're doing. We're not, we're not designing the storm drains for them. We're not doing the, the plans, you know, the drainage study. They're doing that. They're approved to us, what they're doing is reasonable and, and economical.
So you're doing some work that we might have to do otherwise, and I appreciate that. Yeah, Eric and then Greg.
I was just going to say, yeah, so you've done this for quite a while. You were on the, on the committee. Give us some advice. Anything in particular that council ought to watch out for or keep an eye on as this effort moves forward and goes into execution?
No, the, the committee that I was on, we gave you a report once a year of what the money had been spent for. And we made a budget request each year. The staff prepared and we approved. And you approved that. And that's basically the process. I mean, I don't know what else the council can, could, could do. I mean, it's a, it's a housekeeping item, fixing storm drains so you don't have street flooding.
Easy explanation, right? And you're right. That's why we have them. Otherwise, we would have flooded the street, there's no question.
Yeah.
And we did.
Well, yeah, we, I go, of course, I go way back in the flood control business, which is not really a part of the city's responsibility. But the creeks for the county and San Francisco Creek, I spent a lot of time, my professional career, working for Stanford and the backwaters of, of the San Francisco Creek. And it was a long fight on the creek. And I was representing Woodside at one time when we tried to form a drainage district over San Francisco Creek. And my client, Woodside, was fighting at Hoots and Dale. They did not want to pay any taxes for flood control. And Porto Valley was about the same in Stanford. So that's one of the reasons that nothing was really done in San Francisco Creek for a long time. And Ladera Dam was something I was involved with in. And that was thrown out. That was the Corps of Engineers' idea to control flooding in the creek. But Stanford wasn't going to have the land around that linear accelerator flooded in no way.
That would have been very problematic.
Well, the Ladera Dam was an idea by the Corps of Engineers and it just didn't fly with any of the local people. But, you know, anyway, that's not your problem.
So Greg?
Yeah, so I really love your, your background in storm drains. I think that's a pretty big asset. So thank you for, for intervening with us. You know, one thing I, I always ask, ask about, and I'm sorry you could maybe help answer, is I'm always wondering about like metrics in terms of how do you compare, let's say, coastal storm drains against Mountain View storm drains versus coastal storm drains? And I'm always told that it's impossible to compare cities, that every city is absolutely unique and there's no way, there's no metric to compare the performance of one city system versus another. And I guess, given your expertise in this area, what's, what's your thoughts? I mean, is there a way for us to look at best practices, to look at key performance indicators, to kind of judge the performance of, let's say, coastal storm drains versus other cities?
Yes, there's, there's a good engineering practice, but you're right. It's, I, I was, by, by contract, I was the town engineer of Woodside for 20 years. And the problem in Woodside doesn't have any similarity to the problem in Palo Alto. Because we're talking country, large lots, whatnot. You know, a big, a big deal is putting one culvert in across the road. Where here, you're, you're going to build a pipeline all the way down Lewis Road. So it's, it's entirely different. And yes, you can't, you, what you try to do is to bring your city up to the best standard that you can, what you can afford. And some cities say they can only afford a 10-year storm. That's Palo Alto. Other cities will go for 50-year storm. Some cities only go for five-year storm. I designed parking lots in Sunnyvale and they only wanted five-year storm in the parking lots. I told them, you know, a 10-year storm is not that unusual. And you're going to have flooded parking lot. They said, it didn't make any difference. It just won't work for a few days. You know, so it, there isn't, there isn't, there's a different standard for every city. And every city reacts differently. So I don't know how you can compare one city to another. It's a matter of following the best engineering practice you can within your ability to pay for it. I propose a lot of projects to cities that they said, no way. No way, we can't pay for that.
Thank you. That was very succinct. That was. Cory?
You've obviously done this before. And I'm just curious, either based on your experiences in the past or what you might predict in the future, when people on boards and commissions like this or say on the, on this particular committee, try and expand the discussion and try and push the conversation in a way that's clearly, in your mind, beyond the purview of the committee, how do you handle, how, how do you handle that? And how do you think the group should handle that?
Yeah, you have to limit people who want to go off on the deep end somewheres. You have to limit them and you have to have the support of the chairman of the committee plus the members. We had a guy on the storm drain committee way back in 2006 or '07 that wanted to go in all different ways and, and didn't believe some of the things that we were up against. At one time, it didn't look like we were ever going to do what the citizens wanted for the 2005 bond election because the prices of construction had gone sky high. All the work in China and whatnot. And the city was getting bids that were astronomical. So we had to juggle projects and, you know, make projects fit the money that the city had, which was the money that was specified in the 2005 election. So that's, you, you have to try to control your committee members. You know, nobody wants to, to have a committee meeting that goes on for four hours. And the best way, you know, the best way in any city is to get an agenda and get the information out to the committee members and the public well ahead of time. And then we, you know, keep the meeting on track. And I'm a great believer in that. I, you know, I've worked for cities, or not worked for them, I appeared before cities as a consultant, where the stuff went on until 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Foster City was a good example.
Well, luckily, that never happens here in Palo Alto, right?
Well, no, I've been here, I remember here, there was an issue by my house for a YMCA. And my neighbors, there were two of us in the neighborhood in favor of the YMCA and then the whole other neighborhoods. And that meeting went on until midnight and they didn't actually finish it, right here in the city council. And there was a lot of sparks because we had people from Stanford and whatnot that were interested in putting the YMCA on the corner of Alma and San Antonio. It would have made a wonderful spot for it. Never built. Condos are there now, down now.
Yeah, I remember that. Thank you for coming. My job is to keep us on track. And the bell has gone off, so thank you for being here. And thank you especially for your service in the past and bringing your expertise to this. It's very appreciated.
Yes, and this, you know, my interest in this is a, it's a specialty of mine professionally. And so it's just something to keep my hand in it and to help out the city.
Great. Thank, thank you again for applying. And... The next one we have on, it looks like it's Marilyn Keller and then Peter. And then Cedric, whose last name I won't try to say. Pardon? Is that how you say it? So, and Hal. And then it's listed at the bottom that Keith Bennett and Jolanta, whose last name I won't try to pronounce, couldn't come, but still are eligible since they have applied. Greetings.
Hello.
Thank you for being here. You're Marilyn Keller, I presume?
I am.
Good, good. So we are six of the nine that will be choosing the Stormwater Drain Committee. And we're here to interview you tonight and for you to have an opportunity to tell us something about you, why you're interested, what your background is and so forth. And usually, we, we give you two or three minutes to talk about why and what your background is and so forth. Then we'll ask you some questions and then you will have a few minutes, probably a minute, to wind up.
Okay.
So welcome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate being here. I'm interested in considering working with this group because, with the committee, because I think they have some real interesting issues that they're working on and mainly flood control and bay pollution amongst others. And what I'm most excited about is the potential for using vegetation and trees to help minimize peak flows and flooding and, and for filtering the runoff to make it cleaner. And I think my experience with utilities and with Canopy can be of help for that. I spent over 18 years as a research biologist at PG&E, working on minimizing environmental impacts or avoiding them. And that included some watershed management work. I also got to spend seven years on the Utilities Commission here. And more recently, I spent the last six years on the Canopy Board, working on the local urban forest. So what interests me a lot is the overlap between the urban forest and flood control. And I think there's a lot of potential for improving that.
No, that's very good and we appreciate your applying. Anyone else want to start? Okay, so let me jump in on this. Are, are you aware that seven people will be chosen and that from, from this list tonight?
I never saw the list and I heard that when I was waiting, but no, I wasn't aware.
Okay. So let us give you the background. In fact, why don't you mention that, Phil? Phil has a great deal to do with this.
Well, I mean, there are seven people that are going to be on it. So sort of the big picture is, this is an oversight group to look at the budget and the way we spend the money. And there are new elements to the program and I'm glad you know them. The green infrastructure is now one of the things that the voters have approved and placed on our list of things to do. So it's sort of an exciting time for the committee. So we're probably going to expand it from just meeting twice a year to go over the budget and the expenditures to a third time this fall to let the committee give us direction while we're still putting the budget together. Because while the, the committee, the residents approved a fairly defined and narrow task list, there's still project room, especially on the green infrastructure side. So that's what it boils down to, three meetings a year probably. Maybe if the group really wants, we can certainly meet more times, but that's kind of a minimum. And there are seven members and three of them, I think it's three, will be appointed for two years and four of them for four years. Or maybe it's the other way around. But there'll be two groups, so they don't all come due at the same time again. So that's the big picture. Did I? Shocking.
So, so you're coming at this, I think, from a, a background in biology... So, you're coming at this, I think, from a background in biology and so forth, which is different. Some of those who have come in have been engineers. So why don't you say a little more about what you might bring with your background in a somewhat different field than some of the others who have applied, who are far more engineering-oriented than they are oriented toward our trees and our greenery and so forth?
That's a life story for me. I'm always a non-engineer. I guess my perspective is using the resources at hand to minimize what we're trying to work with, and rather than the pipes and drains and the things I don't know much about, and pumps, I'd like to look at ways to minimize the sources of what we're trying to control. And just put in my own personal pitch for what I'm...
Cut down on the amount of storm water.
Right. And I looked at the website, and I'm impressed with the incentives you have for porous hardscape and water catchment devices and all that. I think that's the way to go. And it's sort of like the carbon footprint thing, you know? Rather than controlling emissions, how do you avoid them? And it seems like, and again, this is my own personal passion, but I think trees are the most underrated, inexpensive, effective way to accomplish a huge amount of good for the community. They're cheap and easy. Instead of wearing out, they grow. They hold a lot of water when there's water to be had. They let go of the water when it's ready to, you know, when things are drier, and grow, so they can hold more later. They do a lot of erosion control. They purify the air. They make people happier, make people calmer, people can think better. They actually find health impacts for them, where people do better with trees around them. So I think that's one thing. There's a lot of, like swales, you could do that to help minimize peak flows. I think a lot of, it's like with utilities, peak demand, peak flows is probably a similar concept. The lower the peak flows are, the less flooding you have. Trees can minimize, or slow down, the transport of water from the sky to the ground, because they have to get through all the leaves and stuff. And they actually absorb some during that process. So if you slow down that by five or ten minutes, or three minutes, I don't know what it is, I would guess that would significantly reduce peak flooding incidents. So that's kind of my perspective, is what can we, quote, "green engineering" on the ground to avoid the need for more of this? And I would guess one of the bigger challenges is rising tides and rising sea levels. That's probably major engineering stuff to get whatever you do, dykes or whatever, I don't know.
I don't think that group is going to deal with that, but could, am I wrong, Phil?
No, you're not wrong. There's an interface, but it won't be a major focus area.
Yeah.
Might be some interface.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, if, why not do the easy stuff that can help minimize the problems, and then engineer the stuff that you're stuck with? That's kind of my perspective.
Yeah, that's a new perspective.
And my whole career, my whole life, I've always had the smallest budgets, because the engineers get the bigger ones, and so we've always had to do twice with it. So I've learned to be pretty clever with making a lot happen with a little bit of money. And when I worked for utility, believe me, being in the biology group, we were the small thorn in the side group. Everybody else got all the funding, but it was amazing what we could accomplish, because we got resourceful. And there's a lot of clever tricks you can do, as you're probably familiar with, to minimize impacts. So that's my perspective.
Good, good. Okay, I appreciate you sharing that. Cory.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for applying. Just, you know, hoping to get a little bit more insight into how you work in a group. If you encounter, you know, disagreements, even conflicts with or among other members of the committee, tell us how you might go about trying to resolve those.
Well, again, in my career, I'm usually the odd man out, or odd woman out, where it's a biologist working with all the engineers and people wondering what we're doing there in the first place. I find just being straight up with facts, making sure you've got your facts right, and trying to be helpful with them, and seeing where you have common ground, and finding what it is we're both trying to accomplish, and seeing, trying to understand the other perspectives, because I think that's where you really learn a lot, because there's always something I don't know. And so I think that's part of it, and just trying to keep focused on the objectives. I think if we all have common objectives, a lot of the disagreements kind of work themselves out.
Okay, Karen.
Yeah, you've mentioned a couple of times about being the non-engineer, but on this committee, because there is an array, or a range, depending on how you want to look at it, what would you say about the importance of, or not importance, of having a diverse experience, diverse experience on this committee of seven? You know, if whether it's biological or engineering, or, you know?
I think it's really important to have a diverse experience. I mean, there's so much more I don't know than I do know, that it's true to have other people there that can fill in those gaps. And I think what I can contribute and what I have in the past is being able to ask those questions. I might not know the answers, but questions that need to be dealt with, like, are you aware that, you know, there's a nature of species you're going to wipe out if you do this? I mean, I don't know the answer, but if no one asks it, then you're going to find out later when it's too late. So I think having people, or the engineer that says, "Do you know that this is going to fail under these circumstances when you need it most?" You need someone to have those insights, even if they're not the experts to answer those questions.
Phil has the answers.
Well, there you go. Someone always does.
Who else has a question? Eric?
We're probably running out of time. This is a long, long question.
We've got a little more time.
Great. You've got a line here that caught my eye, which was, "Storm water is a resource." Can you expound on that briefly?
Well, wishful thinking. I don't know how to make it work that way, but it seems like we always need more water. The water table needs replenishing. It's going to take, what, fifty years for California's water table to replenish? The trees around here are pretty dry. Unfortunately, we lost a pretty big chunk of them the last few years, and they're still suffering. It's going to take a while for them all to see all the results of the drought. I don't know how you use the water to replenish, or to move the water around to where you need it. I don't have the answer to that. But it just seems like a thought that if we keep it in our minds enough, maybe an opportunity will pop up. I'm aware that if you have water trucks filling up the water and transporting it, that costs a huge amount of money for what you're getting, but, and it's kind of a symbolic thing. But if there's some way to make it work, like, and I'm not expert in this, but, you know, if you're flooding a dry golf course with storm water, I don't know if that's helpful or not, but it seems like just something to keep in mind. I would, I mean, if it were me, I'd ask Australia or somebody else, what would they do with storm water? They might have an idea. I don't know. Yeah, I mean, so it's just...
What you're suggesting, I think, that's so interesting, is cutting down on the amount of storm water that ever existed, and making sure that we capture it in such a way that we reuse it. And there are other parts of the world where they catch every drop of rainwater and preserve it and reuse it. So that's a, it's a refreshing way of looking at it, instead of expanding our storm drain, you know, as saying, "How can we put less water in the storm drain?" Very interesting.
I mean, if we all had catchment-based, I don't know what you call them, the catch, if we all caught our own rainwater, or, you know, didn't let it go down the drain, then you have less of a problem. So it's just a matter of priority.
Was that it?
That's ten minutes.
The timer is saying that that was, you're ten minutes, and it was very enjoyable to have you here.
All right.
Have you applied?
Sure.
And thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Appreciate it. That's part of interviews, is once in a while, someone has something so different to say. Let's not put so much water in. What are we doing with all that water, anyway? But think of it, it's kind of interesting. She works at PG&E currently.
She did, she did for several years.
Peter!
She was on the UAC for seven.
Yeah, yeah. How are you?
I'm doing fine.
Good.
How are you?
Good. Is anybody not know Peter?
My name is Adrian, no, Peter.
Eric, you don't know Peter?
Hi, Eric. Thank you.
Thanks for applying.
Good to see you. You have been on this side of the table, so you know what we're after. You got a minute or two to sell yourself and get us to vote for you, and tell us, you know, why you want to be on this committee, and so forth.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I guess my biggest interest is turning problems into opportunities, and waste into resources. And working on the, on the committee that drafted the fee, Stormwater Management Fee, there was a lot of focus on green stormwater infrastructure, which really interests me a lot. And I think there's real potential to take some of the load off of the storm drains and into the creeks, and reduce the amount of pollution going into the creeks and bay. And what I'm really interested in is if we can do more active groundwater recharge, which might be a combination of capturing storm water, but also possibly using recycled water to recharge the shallow aquifer. I think that it could serve as a great storage and transportation vessel. So that's what I'm interested in, and would love to be part of the team. I like working with Phil. Good guy. Hope he'll stick around for the full term of the fee.
Yeah, the second person that's mentioned that, so that, that's intriguing. Do you mind if I just dive in for a minute? So, explore that a little more, because my, what I heard from our last applicant was not dissimilar. And I don't know her, but I know you well, so that I know that you practice what you preach and so forth. So say a little more about that. What aspects of this would you incorporate that would make this different than the last Storm Drain Committee and how they operated?
Well, we have a good model project that actually came out of the last fee, which is, is it Northgate or Southgate? Southgate. Okay, Southgate. And so I think that's a model.
And you were mayor.
I knew every other neighborhood.
Yeah, it was the old days when they had Northgate.
Okay, so it's south of Palley, so it's Southgate. Yeah. By the way, I live in the Creekshire neighborhood. I don't know if you've heard of Creekshire, but, or a little pocket over there.
What do you call it?
Creekshire.
And you're vice mayor.
Your area, and you're on Waverly, right?
No, on Fulton, so...
Oh, that's right. That's right.
It's such a parking zone, nine.
Yeah, we all think of things in different ways.
That's true.
I can't say that everyone in the neighborhood calls it Creekshire.
I never knew that had a name.
Well, if I say it enough, then maybe they'll become the neighborhood, right? But Southgate is kind of unique in that they don't have storm drains the way other neighborhoods do. So it was, it made a lot of sense to do these bulbouts and try to capture the storm water, and instead of putting in a lot of infrastructure. But I think what would be a really neat pilot project is sometime when we're paving a road, preferably a long road, to use permeable pavement. And there are some concerns, especially from the past...
Revolutionary.
Well, some would say. There is some concern, especially in the past, about the heavy load of traffic on permeable pavement. And my understanding is things are changing, so it might be worth looking into that, but...
Is everybody getting lagers?
No, the opposite, yeah. That was really a problem. But when we were out touring during the fee committee, what struck me going down Embarcadero was that we have, you know, the typical pavement, and then on the shoulders, you have the curb, the cement, and it comes down and juts in about two feet. And there's not traffic on that area, there's no parking there, perhaps a few bicycles, although I don't think people really tempt Embarcadero. But I think that it might make sense to explore using permeable cement in those areas, so the water sheds off and goes into the groundwater basement. And so I would imagine that there might be some funding from the fee to, if that would cost more than a traditional paving, to help facilitate that. And if it really works, maybe that becomes part of the code, is that we're using a technique like that, or even permeable asphalt for a lot of projects. So those are some things I would like to see happen.
I think, and I mentioned this in a meeting the other night, I think we've become too comfortable thinking the drought is over, because it isn't. I mean, we will have water problems in California forevermore. So if we start looking at things that are like that, I think it's really positive.
And I think there's a lot of potential. You know, groundwater could be a great source for irrigation of parks and large landscapes, if it's managed appropriately. And the city's working with the Water District on a northwest groundwater assessment and looking at improving recycled water. San Mateo County is doing the same thing. So there's a lot happening. And San Francisco Creek is a major recharge area. And the creek is, being the county line, it separates a continuous groundwater basin into two sub-basins. And in Santa Clara County, it's very well-managed by the Water District, although our area's less well-known in the north. And in San Mateo County, they haven't had any management. So we're seeing that change, and I think the timing's right. In San Mateo County, they're also doing a green stormwater infrastructure program, because there's a state requirement that communities need to come up with these plans. And so Palo Alto will be working on that.
Eric, yeah. You've gotten everyone thinking. Eric and then Karen.
So, you know quite a bit about this area already. You've been where we are.
Hit your mic.
Sorry? You know a lot about this area. You've been where we are. This, you know, this project is certainly not simple, but it might be a little more cut and dried than some of the ones that come along. Give us some advice, you know, as council. What should, is there anything we ought to keep our eye on? You know, anything we ought to be watching as this rolls forward in the next few years that we ought to be anticipating, thinking about?
With storm water?
Yeah.
Well, as I mentioned, we do need to come up with a plan, and I think staff's on top of that, and we'll have a good plan.
No pressure.
In good hands. I mean, I think there are going to be issues with potential pollutants, and we tend to think of, you know, the soil is a great remedial source that can help clean that up, and that's certainly true, but I think we would want to be very careful. We're going to learn more about the connection between the shallow aquifer and the deep aquifer, which is our emergency water supply and drinking water for a lot of people in the county. So I think that with both recycled water and percolation of water, I think health issues are going to be really important, and convincing people that it's safe. If we're using groundwater for irrigation, I don't see any uproar in the community. I think people will love that. And they will continue to be concerned about de-watering for basements, realizing that this is a real resource. I think eventually, we might get to the point of doing indirect potable reuse, advanced purified water, and percolating it down into the deeper aquifer. The Water District is planning that, and I think it's really important to be on top of that in communicating with the community. In San Francisco, they're starting to blend groundwater with their water source, and it's only about three percent, but there are people who are up in arms that their pristine Sierra snowmelt is being adulterated. So for this, I don't really see an issue, but I think that as we move forward with more recycled water, we need to bring the community along with us. And maybe Palo Alto never goes that far, but certainly other parts of the county are going to be relying more on recycled water.
Thanks. Karen.
So I actually have two questions. So you're not an engineer, and so, two things. One is, why do you think it's important, because you applied, why do you think it's important to have non-engineers on this Oversight Committee as well? And the other question is, have you given any thought to, or do you have any thoughts off the cuff, of maybe partial, partially renaturalizing some of our creeks, so that there's groundwater recharge going on in some of our other creeks besides San Francisco?
Well...
I mean, if you could cut a channel down the bottom, something like that.
Well, maybe the answer to your first question is that I'm probably better at answering the second question than engineering questions. And so maybe that's what I would bring, is an understanding of our community and waterways and some of the geology. One thing we looked at was the possibility of removing the cement from Matadoro Creek as it passes through Mitchell Park. And I think it was Richard...
We shortened you a little on time, so you can have another couple of minutes, sorry.
Okay, I'll try to-
We didn't set it quite right.
Wrap it up pretty quickly. I think it was Richard Whaley pointed out that the groundwater in that area is actually higher than the base of the creek. So it, it, the water would, it would become a gaining stream in that water would come into the creek and could, and so his concern was, was flooding because you'd be losing some capacity. And my concern was that we're creating a channel for groundwater to go faster out to the bay. And if we do want to use that as an irrigation source, we might not want to do that. So I think that, I love the idea-
There are other locations, of course.
Yeah, I, I love the idea. I would encourage that we do it any place where it makes sense. And I, and I think Bull Park's a great example of that, very popular with kids.
Any other, any other last quick questions? We've kept you for a while. You want to give a minute of a closure?
Well, you know, I saw the people who applied, and it's a fantastic group. And I think it's kind of an embarrassment of riches. So the idea of, of giving new people opportunities to serve the city, I, I think is a, a great goal. And so if I'm not chosen, I will totally understand, and there will be no hard feelings. If I am chosen, I will look forward to serving and working with all of you to really make Palo Alto a model in yet another area.
Thanks, and thanks for what you do with the Tuolumne as well. I've always enjoyed your pres-
Tuolumne to all of you.
I've always liked your presentations, and I would-
No, thanks.
I would urge anyone who hasn't seen one of those presentations to see them. It's, it's so interesting.
We are having the Tuolumne Film Festival in Moatherton on September 17th.
Really?
And our fall gala at the Garden Court Hotel on October 8th. So I'm doing my best to bring business to Palo Alto.
So would you, would you send that to us and, and Beth could circulate that?
Yes, and we're going to be honoring a City Palo Alto employee, Catherine Elbert, who's going to be the director for utilities, so.
Good, okay. Thanks for applying.
And welcome back from vacation.
Thanks. David, are you going to tell us something on Skype?
Yes.
You wouldn't remember, but I think Peter decided to run for office about September 1st when he ran.
This is before everybody voted-
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Let me start this way. Cedric?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Hi, it's, it's Liz Niss.
Hi Liz, I can hear you.
Yeah, good. I'm, I'm running the meeting tonight. There are six of us here as we go around the table. I'll start with Lydia, who's up front to the right, Lydia Koo, Cory Laub,
Yeah.
Me, Eric Philseth across the table, Greg Tanaka, and Karen Holman. The other three are missing tonight, but they will watch this, just as we're watching you right now.
Okay.
So thank you for applying. And just to let you know, you have a minute or two to convince us that you are the right person for this committee. And then we will take that opportunity to ask you questions. And then at the end of it, if we still have time, you'll have a minute or two to wind up. So-
Okay.
If you'd like to begin, please do so.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for accommodating my remote connection. Apologize that I can't be here in person. So I, I was born in Palo Alto. I've lived here all my life, except for the four years of college. I've lived in several neighborhoods of Palo Alto, including the midtown when the, we had the big floods back in the 90s, or 2000, whatever that was. I've been a lifetime environmentalist with a long interest in water management, and I've learned many techniques for dealing with stormwater and slowing water, sinking it, storing it. And I've implemented several of the green infrastructure type practices on properties that I've lived in. And I have a, a software engineer as a background, but I also have had a strong interest in some practice in green building design and, you know, landscaping type things. I've also been serving the, the city for many years in a volunteer capacity, about 20 years, almost 20 years, on the Bicycle Advisory Committee. And I served on the compost blue ribbon task force as the co-chair. And I also provided a lot of input into the, the compost feasibility study, which was both environmental and financial. And I found several aspects of that study which were missing costs that were later added into the studies for, so I, I found to have a good faculty with financial numbers as well as just environmental practice. So that's it. I'm, I'm interested in the envi, in, in just having a good sensible environmentally responsible and financially responsible management of our stormwater.
So Cedric, if I might start, I'm looking at the first page of your application, which says something interesting. A primary permaculture tenant on water is slow it, spread it, sink it. And I've learned many methods to do this. So you've, you've broached that briefly, but do you want to say a little more about slow it, spread it, sink it?
Well, I mean, often permaculture is applied on a larger scale, so actually it gets the city's a good scale for that. You know, slowing it or things like, you want to like, do things like, if you have like a, a, a stream that's eroding a bank, for instance, you might have like boulders and logs down below to capture the, the force of that water and slow it down. And, you know, blunt some of that force. You, you, and properties that I've worked on, I, I've, I've put in like berms and stuff to capture the water and prevent it from leaking off the site and allow it then to, so basically that's stopping it, slowing it, to enable it to sink into the ground. On like, you know, a, a larger side, you'd, like, for instance, in the, the Southgate neighborhood, they have the, the curb cuts where the water can flow along the storm drain, and then it can go into retention basins. And then if it, you can have then exits where if it's filling up that retention basin, it can flow further down the, the gutter to the next retention basin, and so you can kind of cascade it through. So there's various things like that, dry wells, cisterns. So, yeah, this is some of the methods.
Good. Thank you. Who would like to have the next question? Cory?
Actually, just wanted to ask you about working in a group, you know, resolving challenges and group dynamics. Do you have any thoughts on that? You know, talk to your experience, or just if you encounter challenges working in the group, how you go about resolving them, whether it's with staff, or with colleagues, or between other colleagues on the committee if, if you were chosen?
Yeah. Well, personally, I try to speak, you know, what, what's true for me, what are the facts that I know. I try to stick to the facts and stick to my values. I try not to criticize or, or put other people down, you know, so accept that other people are speaking their truth. So listen to what people are saying. I think there's interesting techniques, which I would love to see Palo Alto incorporate in more of its processes. There's just a general, like, you know, what's commonly called like a council circle where you kind of go around and each person speaks, and then the next person speaks, and the next person speaks, but you don't like interrupt each other so much. And then you, you build consensus this way by each person having the opportunity to speak and, and express what they feel is important to them. And then if you can't find consensus, then you, you keep speaking some more. So, so I think that generally is, you know, try to stick with, with the facts and, and try not to attack other people. I, I find, I think that if you criticize other people, that tends to put them on the defensive, and it's more difficult to find consensus.
Thanks.
And I've been on many committees, I may have been on the Palo Alto committee, the Bicycle Advisory Committee for a long time. You know, those can sometimes, usually we're fairly good agreement, but there, sometimes there's, there's points of disagreement, you know, but we just kind of talk it through and then, you know, find whatever is the, you know, majority opinion, basically.
Okay, I'm looking around. Any other direct questions for Cedric? Karen?
So I was asking your friend Peter about this, too. So what would you, what are your thoughts, or do you have thoughts about renaturalizing creeks or partial aspects of a creek, partial portions of a creek to help recharge your aquifer?
Yeah.
And you think, and you think, and you think recharging our aquifer is one of the parameters within this storm budget?
Yeah, I, I think so. I, I strongly support daylighting creeks and naturalizing creeks. I, I'd love to see that happen, you know, wherever we can make it happen in Palo Alto. I did watch Peter's interview before and, and was interested to hear about the, some cases where the groundwater might be too shallow relative to the creek, so that's kind of interesting. That might be a place where you can't fully naturalize it, but wherever else you could do it, I strongly support that. In fact, I was strongly supporting, for instance, having the, a, a bike bed path along Mat, along Matadero Creek as my thinking there is you get people walking along the creek, and you get people interested in the creek, and maybe you get more interest from the community to make it a more natural system. And, yeah, recharging groundwater, shallow groundwater, that's definitely one of the important ways of, of sinking the water, you know, getting it out of the storm drains and into the soil. So I, I definitely support both of those goals.
Thank you. Good, thanks very much. We're, we're down to a minute left, Cedric, so would you like to take the last 60 seconds and just do a final summation on this? And perhaps, as we do, just say why we should vote for you?
Well, yeah, you, you do have a lot of fantastic candidates, so you've, you've got some good choices, so I'd be honored if you pick me. I, I have a analytical mind, as well as a very principled perspective. So, you know, I have a strong interest in the green infrastructure aspect of things. And of course, we have to keep it in budget so that we can have, you know, as many of these projects as possible within the available funds. And so that's kind of the perspective that I bring to it. So I think I'm, I tend to be empathic in terms of group dynamics, so I tend to be easy to work with, within groups, and I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. And I would suggest to the committee that on page three of your, page three of your four pages is that you, that we might take a look at that. You've got a very good write-up, so thank you. So thanks for applying, Cedric, and thank you for making the effort to come in by, I don't know where you are exactly.
I, I'm in Wyoming. We, we went out to see the, the total eclipse here.
Oh, great, good. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
In the meantime, I also have a note that you may have from Bob Winslow as well, saying, "Sorry to miss the storm, stormwater interview. My flight was canceled due to the hurricane in Texas." Was it Hurricane Harvey, isn't it? That's stormwater, yeah. That is serious stormwater.
He's for Bob's, the advance team.
Yes. So apparently he would still like to be considered-
He still remains eligible, yes.
And I know he very much wanted to. I'm sorry, I had a text from him a lot, sometime in, in August, oh no.
Yeah, I think they, they started shutting everything down today, didn't they?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was hearing it on NPR this afternoon, and they said that they were evacuating, they were shutting things down and so forth. They anticipated it could be the hurricane of the century. Well, I mean, it's radio, what do you think?
But he probably didn't blow, I wasn't known about this, but he was really the chair of the, the co-chair with Susan of the campaign.
Right, yes. I attended some of those meetings, so I, yeah, I remember, right. Okay, well, we have the one and only Hal Mickelson here with us tonight. Nice to see you.
Well, thank you. Nice to see you.
Now, you've done this before.
I have done two, I think a couple of terms on the predecessor Storm Drain Utility Supervisory Committee. And I am the current chair of the outgoing committee as it finishes its work.
So you probably know our shtick here. You get a minute or two or three to give your background, tell us why you'd be a great choice and so forth. And then we have a few minutes to quiz you and then we give you some wrap-up time.
Thank you. I'll be brief. For those who haven't met me or heard me, I'm Hal Mickelson. I have lived in this area since 1975. I graduated from Stanford in 1971. And I've been at my present address since 1982. I live in the Green Meadow area. And I was a 33-year employee of Hewlett Packard Company as an attorney in its corporate law department, working on everything from labor and employment issues to trademark licensing over the years. A kind of a conventional paper-shuffling set of corporate lawyers' assignments. And I became involved with storm drains a number of years ago when Larry Klein kind of tapped me on the shoulder and said, "This is one of these unglamorous infrastructure functions that really needs help. And if you can get involved in it, it needs citizen involvement." And I was looking for avenues toward citizen involvement then, as I am now. The difference being that I now have quite a few years invested in learning about this. And the reason that I applied is to make my experience in this area available. I served along with Peter Greckmeyer on the Blue Ribbon Committee that formulated the present fee package. So I've built up some knowledge of it. And I'm open-minded. I think I work with people. I'm a vociferous admirer of the city staff and the work that it does. Part of the pleasure of involvement in this is seeing how sharp, how dedicated, how well-organized, how professional, and how expert the city staff are. So I'd be happy to respond to questions.
So, let me kick it off. How do you think what you have already done in that field is going to inform this next go-around, which looks like it might be slightly different?
I agree. We operate as a committee by poking and prodding and asking questions of staff. And the question, I think, of which I am the proudest is, we noticed years ago that there was nothing being done for the South Gate community. The South Gate community happens to be the only one in the city that had no storm drains installed when the area was developed. And the city staff, with prodding, came up with an ingenious suggestion. There was a certain amount of separate money in the funding for innovative projects, for breakthrough projects. And they said, gee, well, let's match this up. Let's use South Gate for our innovative breakthrough project money. And the South Gate arrangements, which the previous candidate was talking about, they've become the poster for the inventiveness and the greenness of the Storm Drain Utility Program. I think you can really say that that was an outcome that was in part prompted by the Volunteer Committee asking the questions. The new measure has $450,000 a year in it for green infrastructure projects. It has $154,000 a year for incentive programs. Most of what we will want to be doing has been mapped out in terms of major projects. But to answer your question, I think there's room for the committee to keep doing as it has done and answer, ask questions about new directions that things can take.
Yeah, and South Gate's a good example, good track record. Eric?
So you're obviously pretty intimately familiar with this area. So, the bond task, now we're going to spend the money over the next several years.
Right.
Have, give us some advice. Is there anything in particular you think that we, as council, ought to particularly watch out for or keep an eye on as this unfolds?
I think you, as council, as elected representatives of the whole city, want to keep on reminding people of how the whole city benefits. And that's a little bit of a sales job, but I think it's a possible sales job. There is a list of 16 projects which are going to be the priority. None happens to serve my neighborhood. But I can tell my neighbors that, you know, there are places on East Meadow, there are places on Loma Verde, there are places on East Charleston that we drive past all the time. The last round of improvements had improvements along Alma that we drive past all the time. So I think as city council members, you may have a challenge when people look at the map and say, "How does this benefit me?" And I think there is a coherent explanation of how we have to put the pumping stations in the part of the town where the pumping has to take place and how the plan of improvements overall is of benefit to the city as a whole. So that's one top of my head answer, yeah.
More? No, no, no. Did you have, did you want to add to that one?
Yeah, so make sure to keep selling it to the city, even if not everybody gets a project in their backyard.
Exactly. I think that's the gist of it. That's exactly what I would say.
Much as they might like one, right.
I mean, you're on a tightrope because the projects, in the first place, the 16 projects that should be a priority have already been defined. They're in the Blue Ribbon Committee report. They're already announced. So, just as a tip for interviewing candidates when people come in here and say, "Well, here's how I think we ought to spend the money." Well, how we ought to spend the money is, to a large extent, baked already, right? But it's subject to what I said a couple of minutes ago about looking for opportunities for innovation. But, yeah, I think there is a sales job there to be done.
Cory?
Following Eric's lead, I'll ask you to give us tips on something else. We have a crop of fairly excellent candidates, largely. Without talking about specifics, of course. But in general, for this committee, what do you see as some high-level, you know, key qualities, experience types, or other, you know, features to look for in candidates that we're appointing?
As Liz said.
And feel free to sell the ones that you bring as well as others that you'd like to have from people to help.
As Liz said, the future is not exactly 100% the same as the past. But to the extent that what we have had to do and what we're specifically chartered and tasked with doing is continuous with the past, there is less opportunity for brilliant, creative, cutting-edge science inventive thinking by the Volunteer Committee members and much more looking at numbers and looking at the financials. That's what the committee has traditionally done. Its charter has literally been to make sure that the expenditures of the storm drain program are in line with the promises made to the voters and that the money is not being diverted for other purposes. So it is almost an audit function. And people who, wonderful if people have creative ideas, but the backbone of it is the audit function. And as city council members, you have heard from the Supervisory Committee, once a year, we come in with a one-sentence report, which is what we are chartered with doing, which is to say, "We can confirm that the expenditures are in accordance with the program presented to the voters." So what I'm saying about selecting candidates is, if you get a feeling that somebody's not interested in crunching the numbers, looking at the numbers is going to be part of it.
Good. We are down to 50 seconds. So if you want to do a final pitch, this is your opportunity.
Everybody in the city council works hard. Everybody in the boards and commissions work hard. We have volunteer organizations like Neighbors Abroad where everybody works hard. This is a community where we have, do an exemplary job of harnessing people, spending hundreds and thousands of hours to get things done. So this is a small way that I could contribute to it and that's why I'm applying.
I appreciate your point. You have a
Thank you.
A long and well-known history throughout the community.
Well, some of that I can deny, but there you are. Thanks very much.
Thanks a lot, Hal. So where is David? So David, I just want to do a little finish-up on this. You indicated at the bottom that Keith, is it Jolanda? I don't know that person. And now, I would presume Bob as well, are eligible to be voted onto the committee?
Yes, so the, as part of the recruitment process, there is an opportunity for applicants to interview with the city council. Given that there's typically only one night for that and people have busy lives, it's not a requirement that people interview to be considered for appointment by the city council.
So does that mean, then, that there are 11 that we can choose our seven from?
Yes.
Okay. And then Bob, I mean, Phil, you said something earlier about two different terms.
So we have, the body that was created is a seven-member body. In order to create staggered terms, you're scheduled to appoint four people to a full four-year term. And then the remaining three positions will be appointed for an initial two-year period. When those terms are up, they will revert to a four-year term to create that staggering that is typical of both the council and other boards and commissions.
And will we go through the interview process again at that point?
Yes.
Okay, so four and then two. And of those three, those three, their term will be up in two years and if they wish to continue, they have to apply again?
Yes.
And we'll go through this again, right?
Yes, and so on September 11th, when you're scheduled to make appointments for the Storm Water Management Oversight Committee, we'll give you a round of ballots to make those first four appointments. Then of those applicants remaining, you'll have an opportunity to make appointments to those three shorter terms.
And when will that be?
September 11th.
Well.
And that will queue us up so that Phil can have a meeting.
It gives us a challenge, doesn't it? Okay, good. All right. So, thanks a lot, David, appreciate that. Thank you. Phil, do you want to add anything to this? I do think this looks, this has some different aspects to it than.
It does, and everybody seems to recognize that and the level of quality of your applicants is great.
It is, yes. As Hal said, it's always amazing the number of people who are willing to do this who have incredible backgrounds.
Do you have to go around with this group?
Right.
Almost reminds me of UAC applications.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is funny for basically an oversight function, not a policy function.
Well, Liz, we might want to adjourn.
You might want to adjourn the meeting? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.